...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have roll call.
Ken Carter.
Here.
Craig Kretschl.
Here.
Matt Wyer.
Here.
Tyler Paul.
Here. You all emailed a copy of the minutes from our last meeting.
Yep.
Have you had a chance to review those minutes? So I'd like a motion to approve.
To move.
Have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. First docket on the agenda will be a continuation of the Board of Works meeting here. The Depot Committee is now, since they did have a trial run through at the Board of Works, the opportunity to give a progress report on the depot. Susie and Sandy, please.
From the beginning?
From the beginning, yes. Now that we have the media here.
Mayor, council nephews. A lot has happened since we were here previously. We want to give you an update tonight just on our progress. We've replaced the roof. The electrical wiring has been updated and we are ready to set new lighting. The plumber has completed all of his roughing work. We have a five-four and one the Oak Grant. And again, we thank you for matching our funds necessary to the program. Again, you have gave us a lot of lemon squeezing, but Wiley seems to want more, so we will make sure that we get more. The lumber loft construction has started down, construction, they're making great progress. The walls have been skin coated, sanded inside. Carp and rework has been started and their wainscoting has been, had the paint removed. We are, we have opened the doors up to the rear of the building to tell us, you know, we have false doors. We are currently trying to locate the original doors, hoping that they have stores somewhere here in the city. We have made arrangements to have the face of the wall safe refinished. I'm looking forward to those results. We've also spoken with Jeremy about having the paving on the driveway and the parking lots done and looking at landscaping and question about the tree that's in the front, whether that remains or not. The attic has been insulated and brings us to the financial update.
And we worked successfully on raising fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to fundraisers, donations, and grants. And along with the grant, the Oak Grant and the city matching that gives us a hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to work with over depot. Our current expenses and projected expenses would bring us a hundred and thirteen dollars and seven hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. These figures are tentative. There are probably going to be some unexpected things come up that we will also need to put money toward. In addition to that, my figures, my figures don't exactly match the foundation figures at the moment. Connie and I are working on it. I think it has something to do more with the grants that have been added or not added. And I'm thinking, are you holding some money for us at the city? I mean, has Connie sent money to you that you?
I have like, I told her there's like thirty-two hundred yet.
Okay. Okay, that's all right. That sounds like what I was thinking it should be. Okay, great. Then I bet you bring this to our contract, I guess, that we were talking about the need for a contract and that when I have it completed, I'll take it to the attorney and let him look it over. I did have a couple of questions about alcohol and the amount of rental fees that we should charge in the deposit. Are you telling me to go into dumpster? Oh, yeah. I did wonder if was it, if we should plan on a dumpster? Will the city provide a dumpster to flash there or do we have people bag it up and somebody comes by and picks it up later or how do you want us to work that aspect? Jeremy?
Okay, you couldn't hear any of that.
No, I heard it. It would be a little more of a question.
Well, would you want them to just bag it up? Yeah.
I really don't want to see it.
Okay.
Good.
And then the fact that we've had three people contacted already about renting it in May and just wondering if we have permission to rent to them on an experimental basis on our, we can work through some of the rental, what we need to provide for them.
And what did you say about the loyalty side?
I'll check with insurance company on that.
Okay. And it might be that, you know, we won't even, that it won't even be an issue because we can't give these people a definite date and let it be finished by May. I think that it will be good.
Sandy, Sherry, and Susie, thank you so much for all the great volunteer work you've put into this. It's been a great project and as, I believe that tonight we don't need to answer any of those unanswered questions. You're doing your little, your research as to what possible rent should be, the other issues. You can come back when you're ready and we can discuss those.
Okay.
I don't think we're ready to tackle those tonight, but we really appreciate it. Anybody have a comment as to that?
Additionally, kudos to Melissa. I think her position is proving invaluable to, here's just yet another example of, she's doing what we've hired her to do, so that's great.
Thank you.
I will promote our next project, which we're just getting underway with. We haven't kicked it off yet, but we will be having something in the papers. We've been going around and talking to all of the groups right now, trying to get there. We will be there on support in the process.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Roger, come on up. Roger, remember I got one of these here, I'll give you two. I'm gonna give one of these each. Last year we did a big chunk of Winchester Street. We also added brand-new, never-before sidewalks to the west side of Seventh Street with lighting and et cetera. And in 2016 and 2017, we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted each year for sidewalks. The city has what we call our fifty-fifty program where if a homeowner wants a, to get new sidewalks in front of their house, they can get two prices, get with Roger as long as the prices.
We really take care of getting the two quotes.
Okay, you'll get the quotes for them, okay?
We get the quotes for them.
And whatever the cost is of the replacement of those sidewalks, the resident pays fifty percent, the city covers the other fifty percent. In actuality, we want to make, and we want to make something clear here, that it's really more like a sixty, forty program because we're not, the homeowner is not paying for the tear-out of the old sidewalk.
And the stone to get it put back in.
Yeah.
Basically saving a dollar to a dollar a quarter per foot.
The city is providing that.
Yeah, which would bump our price up to the point where the homeowner is actually paying forty percent like Ken said.
Right.
The city tearing it out and hauling it away and, you know, we're taking care of it.
What the fifty-fifty is, is once the sidewalk has been torn out, once the stone has been put back in, then what happens after that, they pay fifty percent of. And that's been a very popular program. This year Roger already has a good bunch of people wanting money for the program right now, but how many?
Yeah, probably got eighteen, at least eighteen people. And some of them were carryover from last year because we couldn't get them done because of the other bigger projects. That's kind of why I'm here tonight to let you tell us this. We got fifty thousand a year for the next two years. And at this rate, I've already got twenty thousand spoken for this year with the ones I've got on the list. And I'm sure after it gets in the newspaper tonight, or I'll probably get some more calls here in the next week or so as it warms up a little bit. My question to you guys was if you have any more big projects to do or to get going on, do we need to start thinking about a few more dollars where that's gonna come from? Just because considering what you spent last year. I know in the paper that Kenny just gives you, shows you what it would cost to finish Winchester Street up from Elm to Line was one example. And then it did, you know, if we wanted to start trying to get walks in from, on Winchester Road from Canterbury on out towards.
To Tiger's Trail.
Just to the bridge would be another sixteen thousand six hundred dollars.
That's just to the bridge?
Halfway, yeah, probably, possibly.
So that could run thirty thousand or so.
For this project, you know, I don't know what you guys.
What's gonna happen out by the jail?
Other ones around here. I just wanted to.
The new jail?
Run out for our individual people this year, trying to get them as we can, but some of them, it doesn't seem to make any difference if we have to carry some over, so. Because we always do get a few wetlands coming in later on in the year.
So the question is, is you know, we have fifty thousand dollars, Roger has approximately twenty thousand already kind of.
Already spoken for.
Spoke for, spoken for, will have some more people come in likely.
Everybody goes on with us, yeah, we have twenty thousand.
So, I mean, do we wait until we see how much, if Roger comes up with a total of twenty-five thousand, whatever, then do we want to bite off another chunk of Winchester Street or is there another part of town that we want to? Last year we talked about continuing with Winchester Street. I'm open to whatever council would prefer.
Winchester Street. And the two major one I slipped with my ankle when I was going out door to door, I saw a lap sidewalk. Just personal experience, those ones on the west are pretty bad. I just wanted to bring that up through the thought, don't need to make a decision tonight, just mill it over amongst yourselves and.
Why don't we?
About where the money's gonna come from.
Let's just, you know, everyone has a copy of this. Feel free to email me your questions or your comments and two weeks from tonight, maybe we come back and give you a little more direction.
Yeah, two weeks from now or first of next month, I might have another.
I say between now and then.
You know, you never know how it's gonna come.
Those major projects were very well received.
Yeah.
Numerous positive comments.
I mean personally, I would like to see.
From the new sidewalks.
I would like to see a hundred thousand dollars of need come to you from homeowners to where we do the fifty-fifty match and it all go to places that need new sidewalks spread around all over town. That would be the perfect scenario now. That's likely not to happen, but it could.
It could.
It could.
We like that.
Yeah, I had it done several years ago. It's a great program.
You get the money for it. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Roger. Greg Kitson, representing the Greater Decatur Advisory Committee is here. I think that each of you may have a letter at your station there from the Greater Decatur Advisory Committee, and Greg is going to speak to us this evening about a decision that Greater Decatur's made. They put a lot of thought into it.
Well, actually, it's not a decision that Greater Decatur has made, it's a recommendation.
That's true.
That Greater Decatur is making.
We'll make that decision.
To the City Council. And each of you, along with the press, have got a copy of this. I'm not gonna read the entire thing, I'm gonna read the first two paragraphs and then entertain questions from each of you. The Greater Decatur Advisory Committee respectfully recommends that the City of Decatur not submit a letter of interest to the 2016 Stellar Community Program administered by the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. The recommendation is made in light of the fact that the City of Decatur did indeed pursue this Stellar Community designation both 2014 and 2015 to learn how to negotiate state programs. We were very, very successful in our Stellar journey in 2014 and 2015. We were not the ultimate designee because of the application that we submitted and the state committees determining that the other communities had greater need and were able to demonstrate what they determined to be transformational change. What we learned during this journey was how to talk to the state government, how to negotiate the programs that are available. We made a recommendation, the City Council acted upon it, to hire Melissa Norby as our community coordinator, and she has already begun a very successful journey of selecting these state programs, submitting grant requests, and getting the grants approved. So, we as the Greater Decatur Committee feel it is very important for us to act upon the progress that we made over the past two years. We have many projects in process right now and deliver to the citizens of Decatur victories that we can then build upon. If we do go down the Stellar journey in 2016, there are some changes. Lieutenant Governor is in the process of changing as we speak, and the programs will be administered differently during a different administration. As we look at the successes that we make in 2016, we may indeed choose to submit in 2017 and beyond, depending on how the Stellar Community Program evolves. Are there any questions that any of you might have about this? The letter of intent needed to be filed by, I believe, March eleventh, and we determined that the resources that we were going to devote to putting together the letter of intent, and if we were lucky enough to be chosen for a third finalist, the resources that we would have to devote to fulfilling the requirements of that application process could be better utilized elsewhere. That is the short version of everything that I'm talking about. So.
So next, we need a motion from council to agree not to apply or to convince you to apply, I guess, but I think the council is on your side. We have been in years past. So if we have a motion from council to accept your recommendation, then Melissa, I believe, we have a letter ready to go that I will sign that will go to Oakra, letting them know that we have decided to take a year off, essentially.
And continue the projects that are already happening.
And that is a very important aspect of this. We're not abandoning the projects. We are shepherding our own projects.
And we've already, we're knocking off these projects currently. I mean, the Wetlands project.
Why are you here, Greg? What projects are you guys moving forward on or, do you have an idea?
Well, I'm gonna defer to Melissa for a lot of that, but the progress that we've already made on the nature preserve and the downtown projects, the projects that we were talking about in conjunction with Mark's Heating and Air Conditioning and our key's property, and here's Melissa.
Well, you know, as Tyler's asking this, I mean, he wasn't around year one for Stellar. He doesn't know what all was in the plan. Craig may not know, and I'm not sure, Wiley likely does, but he was involved with Main Street. So just kind of fill in what was on the plan and then what we can kind of check off as far as things were.
We're working on an Oak Grant to work on the Madison Street plaza.
Which is for?
For four hundred thousand dollars. And the nature preserve project, that application is near removal here from the federal government.
It's been approved by the state.
Correct.
Now we're waiting on Fed.
Oakra, the Indiana Nature has a program available where we're going to apply for ten thousand dollars to add to the pool of downtown facade money. You know, Oakra came in and talked to us a couple of weeks ago about some utility money projects that are available. We're worrying about those. Can you like help me fill in?
Regional cities initiative?
Well, I mean, I was making a list, sorry, when you're doing this, but first, the first round that was Stellar, the things that were already underway or we've completed, there was complimentary projects, which were City Hall, Park, Police Department, but the facade program underway. The Seventh Street corridor.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, that was, that was part of it. Lighting on that, done. Winchester Street, what we did last year as far as from Legion Park up to Five Point, done, because that's an extension of the trail. The Wetlands, what was in first year was the First Street Riverfront. You know, with, those were ideas that we had no, we didn't control any of that property, and that's a, we're moving right along with that. The Main Street and the downtown design plan, I mean, that was all part of what needed to be done. And so those are all things that have been done, and then what's in works, as she mentioned, the Madison Street as far as the streetscapes, how we tie into regional cities to make it more than just Madison Street. I don't know, was there something else that we're actually working on right now? Well, as you mentioned, the Creative Engagement Center.
Did they ever decide anything on how they were gonna distribute the money for the regional cities?
We, not till we knew though, in Fort Wayne about regional cities and the message was, there was no message. And they are still working with the state legislators to see if the funding will come through to fully fund three regional cities, we're waiting on that. As well, they gave us some ideas of how the application process could work and how that, how a funding formula could work, but nothing definite has been released.
But the preliminary breakdown would say that if you have a project, say it's a million dollar project, they want sixty percent, initially, this is what they're saying, sixty percent of the money for that project to be privately funded.
And on hand.
And on hand. Twenty percent?
Public money.
Public.
And twenty percent. And make up the gap.
Yeah. And with that formula, a lot of the small towns are just gonna, they're gonna step back and say, where do we get, we don't have the sixty percent private funding.
Greater Decatur has met and we've discussed this regional cities funding and how we can make an attempt to apply for some of that funding. So the conversation has started. We kind of have a game plan in place of how we're going to present our, some of our projects once that funding is open for application.
And I think it's important to remember too, the projects that were put forward in, from our, for the regional partnership of the plan, that were from Adams County, three of those four were part of our previously, you know, Stellar. One of them, you know, we certainly include in streetscapes, but facades. But we are quite a ways up, I think, we have an advantage because of the projects that we have lined out, we've already had to the generosity of our community, over six hundred thousand dollars committed. That, you know, so when you think about it, do you, took a look at the opportunity of regional cities or do you go after another round of Stellar? The problem with, in my opinion, I guess the problem with going through Stellar is you're delaying these projects again. You're waiting until you find out in August, when we're already underway on a lot of them. And if, and if it's not, if you want to move forward with the projects that you're on hand, then you almost have to come up with a whole nother plan to put forward to Stellar, which, you know, now we just spread ourselves out and.
I shared with the super group meeting today, the City of Richmond was awarded as a Stellar community in 2013, and there's an article in the newspaper today that some of our projects are finally breaking ground. So the timeline of Stellar is extended, and pursuing regional cities in this way will allow us to maybe move forward with some of these projects a little bit faster.
So, I would make a motion to go with the Greater Decatur's recommendation not to apply for this round of Stellar funding and continue along with projects as we have been.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same? Motion's approved. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
We will be happy to continue to update City Council as new opportunities present themselves.
Thank you again for all your work.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yes?
Jeremy communicates with a lot of other street commissioners around the state, not that he's the street commissioner, he's our operations director, but he communicates with a lot of other street departments around the state, has access to a lot of information of what other cities are doing and what's for sale and et cetera, and has found an opportunity for the City of Decatur to make a purchase on a couple of trucks that are, that have a good value to them, that are being sold under value. We think we might be able to put them to use, if you want to explain a little more, Jeremy?
Yes, there is two trucks that are 2012 miles that have very low miles that a northern Indiana city has available. I have went and looked at those today. They're very nice trucks. I think it's something that we could have some future use for.
Took our mechanic with you?
Correct.
He looked it over, looked them over?
Correct. There's two trucks.
Miles on them are?
Uh, one's got a little over seven thousand mile on the one, and the other one has just a little over eleven.
Okay.
They're Harvester chassis trucks. They're, they're bigger, a little bigger truck.
Now, you have a use for these trucks?
Yes.
What are the possible uses?
Possible uses would be for recycling, could be used for dump truck application, could be used for a lot of different park application, just, I wouldn't say it's endless, because it's not, because you're a little bit of set on, on the application, but there, for us, there would be a lot of uses.
Scissor dump, scissor dump beds.
Yes, correct.
And what's the approximate value of a truck that's, what did you say, 2012?
It's a 2012 model for both trucks, we could buy for forty-five thousand dollars.
We can buy two trucks for forty-five thousand or make an offer for even less possibly?
Correct.
And what are the, what is the street value of them? I mean, the retail value?
To buy them brand-new, you're looking at about a hundred and fifty each. To spec them out, to buy them, to send them off, to get everything fabricated, you're right at one fifty each.
And what if we were to go find a couple of used ones like this on a lot somewhere, what would the used value be?
Um, it varies. Talked with a couple of different suppliers, they're talking probably forty-five each, forty-three to forty-five each, to where we have the option of both of them for forty-fives.
Jeremy did show us pictures of the trucks at the Board of Works meeting, and I will have to say they look like they're in excellent condition. Discussion by council?
I appreciate Jeremy looking at opportunities. That's why we've tried to be more involved with other communities. Our needs are very similar to theirs at times.
I'll speak.
I appreciate you looking into it.
I have budget money for the trucks. Yes, I do have budget money. I'm not asking for any money.
Jeremy had explained that to me, that he does have budget money. Jeremy mentioned possible recycling, and that is something that the city's looking into, but we're a long way from having all the answers to being able to do that. We're in hopes of soon having a survey for the public to give us their input on curbside recycling. And once we have that available, we'll put it on our webpage, we'll put it on the social media so that people can access it that way, and we'll have copies at City Hall that people could stop and pick up, which we can have the newspaper help promote that for us. But there are a lot of questions that we have to answer before we can decide what to do, but yes, there's a fair chance that if we can answer all the unanswered questions and determine that curbside recycling would be a benefit to the city and something that the city would support, that the trucks could be used for that. If not, we have a, you do have other uses for it. So it's more of an opportunity. We don't think the trucks are gonna be available for very long, so. We don't think the trucks are going to be available for very long, so it's an opportunity for us to invest in these trucks rather than waiting and trying to buy new and not being able to afford them, not having that much money in the budget, and so it's an opportunity for investment.
Yes, it is.
Comments?
Board recommended purchase.
Yes, earlier Jeremy came to the Board of Works, and it was recommended by the Board of Works to come to council, that the Board of Works does approve of council spending the money.
Make a motion to approve the Board of Works recommendation for the purchase.
Have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. That's all from the actual agenda from my report. I just wanted to put a plug in for the great event that was this past Sunday evening out of the high school. The Cultural Connection Committee put on their first ever Decatur's Most Talented, and it was a huge success. It was, I have to say, I was a little skeptical going in. I was, number one, thinking, okay, what kind of talent do we have here locally that's willing to get up on stage and perform? Number two, how are you going, how are you going to get people there, you know? That's a big auditorium, and I visualize seeing a lot of moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas, and probably that was about it. But if the auditorium, I think the lower half of the auditorium seats 750 roughly, I would guess that there were around 500 people in that lower half of the auditorium Sunday night. It was an excellent crowd. Cultural Connection got with Alex Mendez, contacted him. He organized auditions for the talent. He brought in people to run the sound, run the lighting, stagehands to come in and switch out between acts.
Krista Miller?
Krista Miller was the emcee for the whole event. I think everyone knows who Krista is, and it was awesome. Eleven different people performed, whether they were singers, there was one young man that was, he rapped, is that how you say it? It was a positive message that he had in rapping. There were some siblings that clogged, piano players, singer, there was a 12-year-old young lady there, 12 years old, that's never performed in front of a crowd, and she performed Adele's song, what's it called? Hello? It was amazing, yeah, and there was a young man who was a drummer, that was pretty awesome. So, anyhow, I'm rambling on and on about this, but I don't think enough can be said as to how good the whole thing came off, and I was very pleased with it. The school had a, I'm not sure what organization it was, but they had a pasta meal beforehand, and it was well attended, and a lot of people stayed after the pasta meal, went to the program. The lady that was sitting in front of me, she turned around and said, this is so great that there's actually something to do in Decatur on a Sunday evening. And there's always other nights of the week that there's things to do, but there's never anything on a Sunday evening, and she really appreciated it, and her and her son came. That's all I have from the mayor's report, so let's go to department heads. How about the fire department?
Good to know.
How about the police department?
No, thank you.
Roger?
No, I'm good.
Jeremy?
I will be attending training next week at Green Road School. Taking a couple of employees, looking for a work, continued education. There are plenty of not courses, a lot of different, this continued education. It's very beneficial for the employees. It's free of charge other than, you know, obviously your, your rooms, so, I spoke to Ken about it over the last month or so, it's very beneficial. Free days. Not just because...
It's in, and it's in God's country. I second that one.
I've worked since 2009 for a special one. It's time to use someone like you.
Employees need to always have more training all the time. Talked about that today in our department head meeting. Who we got next? Nate?
I'm looking for...
Dan?
I'm opposed to Tim State. I'll say that.
Ann?
Nothing tonight.
Melissa? Here comes Melissa.
Good evening. The downtown facade applications were due yesterday at 4:00. I'm happy to report that we received 12 applications for the downtown facade program. The plan for the Decatur Main Street Design Committee is to spend the month of March reviewing those, and that will include review by some different city departments, and then they'll go to the committee for review. We would like to have those awarded in the month of April. So, again, we had 26 people pick up an application who showed interest, and we received 12 applications, so...
And we have, how many, how much money do we have to share?
The city's committed $50,000.
$50,000, matching funds.
Plus, and Decatur Main Street is going to apply to Indiana Main Street for an additional $10,000 to go in the downtown facade program pool.
So, 12 applications, and they can be in varying amounts. Somebody may be applying for a $20,000. The most anyone can get is 15 as a match. I mean, in other words, if they're going to do $30,000 worth of work, they would be eligible for 15, but if there's...
The building owner can always spend more, but the maximum the city would award per project is $15,000.
And out of those 12 applications, there could be 100,000, $200,000 of renovation, and we still only have $50,000 of matching funds, so that's all part of the review, but it's still, it's pleasing to have 12 applications for facade work in downtown Decatur. That's awesome.
And those other 14 that are considering it, they took the initiative to pick up an application, encouraged them to ask Melissa questions, ask the mayor, council, you know, this is a multi-year program we've committed to.
And I've already had some building owners say, you know, not this year, but next year, so I've already started a list of people who are interested for next year.
And I think it will be contagious if there's 12 people putting money in their facades up here. Others will see it, realize the benefit of it, and that, you know, they can get some matching money. So, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. That's all.
Thanks. Comments from city council members? Anything?
Just commend Melissa's on the meeting today. This is really the second official, but the Greater Decatur 2.0, where we have the different committees come in and give an update to one another. I just kind of sent them back. I think it was, went really well. It's great to see what is going on in our community. And I guess maybe a question from Melissa, the slides that you had, you think there's a way that we, I don't, can you put a slideshow on Facebook? I only know that you can. It's a general question, but...
We can put a link, we can make that happen.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't post that so everybody can see what's going on, because those definitely have defined needs too, what these organizations need.
We can put it on Facebook and the city website and drive people, we'd be happy to share it.
Yeah.
Thanks. I had a comment, mayor, on appreciate the local media covering city council meetings. After the last meeting, it was reported in the Democrat that raising 224 will alleviate flooding on that side of town. I had two phone calls out right after the paper came. Not necessarily concerns, but Cecil Cruz, who has Standard Auto, said, you've been at every meeting I've been at, how I still just want pointed out that this is more to keep the highway open, not alleviate flooding. The flooding's still going to happen, and the city will react to it and make progress on continual improvements to infrastructure on that side of town.
Right.
It is happening, and people are seeing.
And Dada's saying that this will keep 224 and Jackson Street open once it's complete. However, they have no control over rain, and if it rains a lot, there'll be flooding. What they will say is that by way of, you know, where they're moving earth and where they're putting it, whatever, that, that the flooding shouldn't be any worse than it's ever been before.
And we'll monitor it and do what we can as a city to, to work with the flooding.
Yep, yep.
Quick comment. Jeremy, how's, did they start the pipeline or 224?
Oh, yeah.
How's that going on?
Slow with the weather.
Okay.
But it's progressing.
Couple more weeks, three weeks, matter of whether...
Next week is supposed to be really nice weather-wise, so...
60.
Hopefully, hopefully, maybe next week.
And for those, Bob, because in the paper maybe just mentioned, a lot of people have seen the pipeline out behind the water plant and Riverside and...
So, it has, yes.
And there's a lot of questions, we've had some calls in here, what's going on? What's, are they raising 224 now? I know you've had something in the paper, but we might want to, and maybe even social media we might want to tap into, so... Okay, anything else from council? Tim?
I will report real briefly. If you recall, a few weeks ago, council adopted a resolution that opposed two Senate bills that had been introduced that had pretty significant impact on the solid waste district in Adams County. To give you an update on, on those bills, SB 88, which would have taken away taxing funds or taxes as a source of revenue for the district, was killed in the Senate. And then SB 366 got out of the Senate to the House, and Representative Matt Lehman co-sponsored the bill in the House. The bill was originally introduced by Senator Brown, Liz Brown, in the Senate, and it basically allowed the county to, pretty much through the commissioners, to dissolve the district at any time. It took away any kind of basic authority on the part of the district, and there was some question of whether it actually dissolved the district. So, we worked very closely with Matt and were successful in getting a number of amendments added to the bill that make it much more acceptable. It's my understanding that that, and I actually had an opportunity to go down and testify before the House Environmental Affairs Committee on this bill, which was very interesting and very enlightening. But nonetheless, it's now in the final form. It's, it's supposed to get out of the House today or tomorrow. Senator Brown has concurred with the numerous amendments that were added to the bill to address concerns that we and other districts had raised, and it should go to the governor's desk sometime next week, but it's, it's a far better bill from our perspective than what it was when it got out of the Senate. So, I'm glad that that happened because it would have had some real adverse impacts to the district, and it would have directly impacted the city of Decatur. So, I'm glad to see that it worked out the way it did, and I certainly appreciate Senator Brown's willingness to consider the amendments and Matt Lehman's efforts to get those amendments approved.
Well, I will jump in at this point and thank you, Tim, for all the attention that you gave this particular bill to protect our own solid waste district, because I know that you've put a lot of work in it, a lot of time, and, you know, how much you value our local solid waste district, and so thank you for all of your hard work.
That's fine. Thank you. Thanks for you guys' support.
Comments? Comments from our favorite treasure?
I just need to make a, a record for my, for the cash investments for the city for the year 2015. I just need to make a matter of record that I advertised.
Second? Got a motion and a second to make in a matter of record. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Anything else, Phyllis? That takes us to the public. Sherry, do you have anything? Mary? Clyde? We have two of our finest in blue here tonight. Are you just visiting, or did you have business? Anything you want to take up? Thank you for all your work that you do. We all truly appreciate it. And that takes us down to approval of the claims. If I could have a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
Have a motion and a second to move, approve the claims. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Say, motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor? Opposed, the same? Were adjourned.